Welcome everybody. Thanks for attending this meeting this afternoon. I think we've got apologies from Alison Davis, Amy Woodward, Andrew Feltin, Clive Dentons and Colin Hayfield. I think Andrew Feltin and Colin Hayfield have got a better offer at Cabinet. Right, okay. Item two on the agenda is voting and actions from the last meeting, which was included in your pack. Do we agree that there are a true and fair record for those of us that were here? Are you very happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. No dissenters, we'll take those as accepted. Okay, item three, we've got two matters for decision today. And I'll just advise everybody that I've got an item under chairs business as well. So we'll take the first matter for decision, which is item three, which is the DSG budget. And this is you, Brian, I believe.
Yep, thank you very much. So this is a report on the amount of DSG grant we'll receive in 2122, what's been awarded and our actual allocations, how we're divvying that up. There's one decision for you, and that's on what we're spending on the central schools block. And we'll come to that at the end because it's on table six. So I'll quickly go on to table one and just explain that that's basically allocations by block. And then the change that's happened since the positioning 2021. And then if you go down to paragraph 2.1, that's the schools block. And so the de-delegation amounts. So the first table is really just showing you the change from one year to the next. Okay? If I go on to the schools block on top page two, we're obviously following the hard funding formula for the schools block. And decisions are already made on the de-delegation items. So if you look at table three, this is really just the breakdown for one year to the next of where we're proposing for the allocations for the schools block and what's happened to the schools block allocations. You know, we're still, you know, obviously the ISB individual schools budgets is still 99% of this schools of this schools block. And it's actually increased by 9.1%, which is in table two above the whole of the schools block DSG. The ISB has slightly increased a bit more than that. And that's mostly due to the minimum funding guarantee, as well as the paying pensions that's now being included in the DSG allocation, rather than coming in as a separate grant. Okay. The next block is the high needs block. Table four shows the positions between the one year and next, what we're allocating. It also shows that we're actually over allocating at the moment. And this is in the sense that it's part of the high needs block stroke DSG recovery plan. We're hoping to, if all things being equal, anticipate at the end of the year, at the end of 2122, the overspend would be 4.942 million. And then with the overspends and the deficits from 1920 and from 2021, that would equal our overdrawn reserve, for a better word, of 20.7 million, which is the bottom figure on that table. That's held separately on the local authorities' balance sheet in accordance with the regulations. There are some quite large changes from one year to the next on the individual lines there. And that's because of all the work that Dwayne and Ross and the Send Inclusion Change Programme are doing to realign budgets, to forecast where we think we'll be by the end of the year. So that's why there was some quite big changes, for example, in the SEND SEN top-ups to independent schools. Go on to the early years block. This is the one block where we actually, we get an allocation at the beginning of the year, but it's also adjusted during the year and sometimes even after the year. So it's only got a slightly 477,000. It's basically, it's taken into account decisions that were made at the January 21 Schools Forum to increase some of the rates. You can see in the final column and the change column, it's predominantly, the increase has predominantly gone to the universal three and four-year-old line. Okay. Then this is the next block, the central schools block. This is the one where we actually need the decision from you. This is the mixture of historic and ongoing commitments. Generally, there's no inflation applied to any of these. And this is what you're actually required to approve at this meeting. There are generally two, there were just two major changes. One is the teachers' paying pension, which is now coming in as part of this DSG block rather than a separate grant. And then also the reduction in the children protection taking care service, which has gone into a new service model within children and families in the People's Directorate of Worcestershire County Council. That is about it for now. Now it's a quick rush through. Are there any questions, please? Before we go on to making the voting on the decision.
Thank you. Stunned them into silence, Brian. I can't see anyone raising their hand. Any questions?
I hope the report is pretty straightforward. Penny, Penny O'Neill wants to make.
It's comprehensive. Okay. Nikki, do you want to comment, please?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Brian. Thanks for that. Just a question. So on the last point on 5.4, obviously there's an expected 20% reduction from the government plans going forwards. Do we have reserves in place for that? What's the action plan for that?
There's been a couple of years of smallish underspends on this block, which we've put away. I can't for the life of me remember the amount, but it should certainly be able to cushion the blow for at least one year while we get plans in place. And that'll obviously rely on the services, realigning what they can spend and what they can't spend. Some of them are obviously ongoing services, others are historic. You know, there's no way we're not going to, we can't, we can't stop paying the 266,000 for the North Flemington School requirement. But there are other areas we can look at, and the reserves will actually just give us time to review all those services over one or two years to see if we can get that spending down and come within the revised central schools budget.
Brilliant. Thank you.
Okay.
Penny, I think you had the amount exactly. We spoke about this yesterday, didn't we?
We did speak about it yesterday. Yeah. So I don't have the exact amount, but it's approximately 220,000, I believe. And then there's an underspend that will most likely be contributed into that this year as well. So that will increase most probably at the end of this financial year. So the other thing I just wanted to add actually is in the future monitoring reports that we provide. So the next one will actually be in June, and that will be the out term position for this year. We will include reserve balances so that it will be clearer for Schools Forum to understand that whole picture, not just the in-year picture.
Yeah, we've currently got, actually I've got the figure now, it's 241,000 so far. It is in the central schools reserve plus a possible amount that is reported in the out term report, which I think off the top of my, in the report I'm presenting at points in item six, I think that amount is, I'm just looking at it quickly, is another 117,000. There'll be plenty, should be plenty.
Rather you felt confident and comfortable. That's not a problem. I do, I do, I remember what it was.
Rose, I think your mic is unmuted. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any more comments or questions for Brian and Penny, please? Okay then.
Thank you very much.
To approve the budget allocations in table six under item 5.1. All those in favour of that, please put your hands up.
That's shown 15 out of a possible 19.
Great, thank you. If you'd like to lower your hands, please. Is anyone voting against? Is that Tony Dix? He registered a vote against. Okay, if you'd like to lower your hands, please. Okay, got that on record. Neil, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Item four is future meeting dates. This is Neil.
Thank you, Phil. So in the January meeting, I said I'd bring a paper forward to this meeting to set out the future meeting dates. As members will be aware, I mean, the change from the national funding formula meant that we had additional meetings in January to sort of finalize the schools blocks allocations. So what I've done is I've gone through in section two, what the key decisions and dates are to see how we can best align them to future meetings. So I'm not going to go through those, but I think it does give you a good summary of when the key points are for decisions by Schools Forum. Looking at those key decisions, I came to the conclusion that it would be probably best to have four meetings a year because we must have at least four meetings. And they would there be in June, September, January and March. Of course, we can always fall back on extraordinary meetings to deal with any urgent business. So it's for a decision for Schools Forum, whether they approve the meeting dates as set out in section three and the appendix. But have to take any questions from anybody.
Yeah. Any questions or comments, please? Martin?
I'm mute. I just do ask, when the de-delegation consultation with Schools will therefore take place? Be reported in September? So would this be before the summer break?
Yes, the consultation will go out during the summer term now with intention of it going to the October meeting. Previously it had gone to the December, but because it was quite tight for 2122 de-delegation, I think I want to bring that forward because if Schools Forum decide to not go for de-delegation for any of the services, it will give them a bit more time to plan how they're going to deliver those services in the future year. The other main theme which I should have mentioned was that the growth fund paper will go at the same time as the national funding formula and early years funding formula in January. So that'll be delayed, but at least you'll get the whole picture at the same meeting.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Nicky or please? Okay, are we happy then to approve that timetable? Please indicate.
Yeah, all 19 in favour.
Thank you very much for that. Would you like to lower your hands now, please? Thank you. Okay. Obviously, the rest of the items are for information and comment. And the first one of those is item five, which is admission service historical charging. And this is Burn, I believe.
Thanks, Chair. So just a paper here really to tidy up the historical situation. It was previously doubted by Schools Forum back in October 2018 around challenging for the admission service to academies. It was agreed that would no longer take place. Apologies, predates my involvement in commission of the admission service. So just wanted to make sure we're clear that this is now put to bed as an issue. All academies received the relevant refunds back in July 2019. And no further charges are now made for the admission service, excluding any non-statutory parts of that service, such as 11 plus testing. There are no more refunds due, and our legal services confirmed there was no more refunds due prior to the 2018/19 academic year either. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any, okay, Jane Borus, please. Now you're on mute, I think. Bye. Okay, Jane, would you like to go ahead? Jane, did you want to comment?
There is some sound. I can't quite hear you, Jane.
My friend's not working.
Yeah. Are you able to post your question?
In the chat column, I think.
Sent us on a let reading class. I don't want to do many more of these.
Okay, on the legal advice, this was not concluded by the working group last year. Apologies, Jane. I think I'll have to go away and look at that when I come back to you.
Sorry, what was the question, Burn, please? Sorry.
Can I clarify what was concluded by the working group regarding the legal advice about refund previous financial years? Jane's understanding is that was not, the agreement was not that there was no more. And colleges were entitled, or possibly were entitled to more refund for previous financial years. I understood your question, Jane. And so apologies, it predates my involvement with the service, so I'll have to go away and take it back again. But my understanding is the legal advice now is that there are no more refunds due. Or no academy are entitled to any other refunds than they've already had.
Jane, can you recall who was on the working group from the officer's side? And let us know who those people were, because I can't remember.
Hayley Good was involved.
She's left.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jane.
Okay, report back to us then, Burn, will you?
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Thank you very much. Note that recommendation. Are there any more comments? Thanks for that, Jane, and thanks for your report, Burn. Thank you. Right, item six is DSG monitoring report for 2021. And this is Brian again, please.
You hear me okay, yeah?
Yeah.
Yep, good, okay. Right, this is the standard monitoring report for the position that we forecasted for the end of the financial year 2021. This is, there hasn't been a lot of movement since the previous position, which we reported at the beginning of this calendar year. So if I just go down, it shows the four blocks in table, at the table on top of page two, which is basically all our, what we've got in, what we've had in original allocation of the DSG, then removing the recoupment to come to the 234 million of DSG for 2021. Then table three in paragraph 2.1 shows how, what the forecast is against each of those elements of the 234 million. Obviously, we've got, and you all know that we've got a high overspend on the high needs block of over 10 million, and that's offset by underspends in the other three blocks, reducing the overall DSG overspend to 6.795. Okay. Go down to the next block, which is explanation of the variances. You've got the schools block. That's mainly to do with the so the contingency and that underspending. And then there's also the a few minor overs and underspends on education services. This is the nitty gritty. We've got the high needs block. This is more or less in the same format as we gave you the last time, which you seem to prefer, which is a point by point on the various issues. So you can see that, you know, we've got 10, we know we've got, we've said we've got 10 million overspend. You know, 80% of that is to do with the independent top-ups to independent schools. So, you know, that's the largest overspend. We've also got overspend obviously in special school top-ups. And then we've got also some relatively minor underspends offsetting all that mainstream top-ups resource provision. Okay. Going on to the early years block, that's 610,000 underspend. That's mostly around to do with the take-up of the additional 15 hours for three and four-year-olds, not the universal, the additional. So that is the major element there of the underspend. As we talked about earlier, also, we've got a small underspend on the central schools block of just over 100,000. And these, each of these unders and overspends will go into separate reserve at the end of the year and will start reporting next year. We'll have a section which shows you those reserves as well. The, sorry, the appendices, then also how we used to present it, of just literally every single line where we've allocated budget, what the forecast is just under a month ago, what the variance is. Really, it's just for information really. And is there any questions on any particular elements that we haven't already reported on? Or want to update on?
Under 2.2, Brian, have ESFA asked for our action plan?
They've, we've put a meeting, I think we've got a meeting in a few weeks' time to discuss issues with them, but they haven't formally asked us for anything yet. It was going to be a light touch. I think they're still waiting to see the fallout of how local authorities and the education sector recover from COVID, how quickly they get on with that. So, yeah, and also the department itself. So we are having an informal discussion with them in a few weeks' time.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions, comments for Brian, please?
Just to say, Phil, the meeting is actually on the 26th of April with the SFA.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Neil.
I guess they've got bigger fish to fry anyway. Martin, Martin Davis, please.
Yeah, just a slight sense of mystery about the penultimate bullet point on page three of eight. 0.675 million on resource revision. And then it goes on to say, due to the clarity of costs not being fully incurred and assumed delays in payments. What does that mean?
I'm assuming that when we forecasted it previously, there was a bit of grayness on what costs have actually been incurred and also payments that were coming through each financial year and for what. They've had a good cleanse of all the data, all the information coming through, and this is a revised forecast.
Right, right.
So it's actually just a, it's a note to say what's been done for the previous forecast to clean the data up.
Well, I'm glad to hear the data's been cleaned up. Thank you.
In the process of as well.
Okay, any more questions, comments for Brian, please? Brian, thank you for another very comprehensive report.
All right, thank you very much.
Right, item seven is the education sufficiency update. And that's Burn again, please.
Thank you, Chair. So we publish an annual update to our education sufficiency strategy every year. First of all, apologies to Schools Forum. It's published in the autumn term. So I'm indebted to make sure this comes to Schools Forum at the appropriate time from now on. Various things held up this year, along with many other things. But the annual update gives the detail on how we're delivering or how we plan to meet the demand for school places across the county over the next year and support the five-year sufficiency strategy. In general terms, growth in pupil numbers continues across the county, along with the housing build-out. However, it's not uniform in all areas of the county. In-year pressure as families move in during the academic year is a particular problem in many areas. But again, this isn't uniform across all schools, and it'll be the most popular schools that see the pressure of places, while some of the schools still remain with available space. So there's some conflict in there. So there's some conflict in there. This is published online, all schools would have received a copy as well. The couple of points that aren't included in the report or in the strategy following a review by our overview and scrutiny committee is a new strand of work looking at, working with the ongoing school sustainability groups that are happening, looking at a process for identifying areas of overcapacity and how the local authority can work with those schools to support, whether it's a result of short-term overcapacity or places being available until housing growth comes along and more pupils are needed, or where there is some reorganisation needed because the pupil numbers aren't in that area anymore as they once were. And the other strand that's not included in there is a commitment for local area-level briefings with all schools around sufficiency planning. When there's a change or an identified need for new school or school expansion in an area, working as a group of schools across an area to try and promote partnership working and make sure that we're taking on board the aspirations and the opinions of each school in our sufficiency planning going forward. So that's something that we'll be building into, both those strands of work we're building into next year's sufficiency update over the summer term. Looking for publication again in the autumn. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Which overview and scrutiny, what date overview and scrutiny committee was that discussed at, can you remember?
There were two seconds, I've got the paper open. It was 23rd of February.
Okay, thanks very much, so we can read the report in detail. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've got areas of high pressure in some areas of town, complicated by the house building, and we've obviously got work to do on improving the quality of schools in some areas so we can ensure that parents have, or parents have a good quality school to choose from, don't we?
Exactly, yes.
Any comments or questions for Byrne on that report? Please. Martin?
I was looking with interest at paragraph 1.6, where this is this business about schools being proactive to attract pupils to try and balance the provision between schools, but of course, if you think about it for a second, all schools will be proactive, including those that are very good at attracting students. So this pupil, so this might turn into a zero-sum game if you're not careful.
Yes, I think the idea of schools being proactive, it's partly a result of the academyisation agenda. There is a bit more of a competition out there among schools, and we want to make sure that schools are active in that approach. It comes on the back of some of the sustainability work we've been doing, just the importance of schools making sure they're continuing good marketing practices and continuing to attract those parent communities they have in the past.
Thank you, Becky Harrison, please.
Hi, I like your little sufficiency update booklet, it's very nice, I like the colours in it, it helped me. I think my biggest concern is secondary schools, brilliant, they're all going to be able to subscribe, but in the next six years, they're not going to be able to subscribe because they're going to be in the position I'm in, where I haven't got enough bums on seats and I can't afford to continue. And it is that, that's my concern, what are primary schools going to be doing? Because there aren't enough children out there, and it frightens me.
Yeah, it's a good question. So there's two things, so the strand I talked about earlier, looking at any overcapacity. We'll look to see how we can help, I don't have the answers to that yet, it's a piece of work that needs being taken, but it's an active strand of work we need to look at. But also across the county, there's still a lot of housing growth to come forward, and some of that will offset the short-term availability of spaces that we've got. A lot of the local plans that our district and borough colleagues have got out there at the moment have several thousand more houses to come over the next few years. So there is in some areas to work to do just to get over what is possibly a temporary brimming low pupil numbers before new houses come along and new families move into the areas. But this is something that we, as I say, we look at an annual basis and our forecasting is updated continually, so we try to keep as live a picture of it as possible. So when schools do have concerns about numbers, I recommend come and talk to me first of all, give some context of what's going on in the area and work together that way and see what we can help to resolve in the short term for schools.
Yeah, there's a number of factors at play here, isn't there? I mean, the birth rate seems to go in peaks and troughs, and also we're at the mercy of the rate which developers build their houses and fulfil those plans. Just because there's a planned application been approved for 600 houses, it doesn't mean they're going to appear straight away. It might take 10 years to get built, depends on the state of the economy as well, doesn't it? Rose, go on, please.
Hello, yes, thank you. A little bit similar to the previous speaker. We were talking in our consortium, which is the Bedworth Consortium, about the fact that actually quite a number of our schools have got lots of spaces, and we're not seeing an impact of growing numbers, in fact, we're seeing a decline. So in my case, I've lost 8% of my school this year because we've got the barracks and they come and go, but they're all people moving out of Warwickshire, not into Warwickshire. So they're not even moving locally to local schools, they're moving out of Warwickshire. So like I say, a small percentage of that is the barracks, but I don't know if the attraction of stamp duty has influenced this, but we've seen, and we've got others that are about to leave us. So by the end of this year, that we know that we're going to lose 11% of our school, that's having a massive impact on us, and that isn't just our school, that's a couple of schools across the Bedworth Consortium. So I know you're saying there's lots of housing estates sort of growing up, but it's, yeah, there's also pockets in Warwickshire where this is not the case.
Yeah, absolutely, I think I'm due to actually come out to talk to the Bedworth Consortium in a couple of weeks' time about this matter. But yes, Bedworth is a particular area where there's lots of housing proposed, but none of it's happening at the moment. So you're saying there, Chair, about there's plan permission granted or proposed, but the developers aren't building that at this particular time. So what do we do to make sure schools are sustainable in the short term or the medium term? Because we know there's longer-term plans that are going to require possibly more schools, possibly growth, but we've got to get there first. And so, yes, it's a good point, thank you, Byrne.
Okay, any more questions or comments to Byrne, please? Byrne, thanks very much, thanks very much for that detailed appendix and report. I, for one, certainly find it interesting to read, it's very helpful to see what's going on. As someone who sits also on the admission appeals panel, it provides lots of context for the kind of things that are coming along in terms of admission appeals, so it's very useful, thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Martin's got his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Martin.
It's just, and this is looking forward, the, obviously, we don't really know what the implications of Covid will be fully, but it's already clear that it's having, surprisingly perhaps, a depressive impact upon the birth rate, and it's quite possible that urban rural movement of people may intensify. Now, I realise that it's really next year when some of this will come through, presumably with also the early results of next Sunday's census as well. But it's kind of an alerting thing, I suppose, but I'm sure you are very acute to that.
Yes, it's a good point, we don't know the impacts of Covid yet, you know, we think birth rates may have dropped off. But likewise, I've had reports on areas where housing growth during lockdown last year, housing developers have been building houses en masse, but not necessarily selling them at this point, or reducing them in the future. So there's, we don't know how it's going to be, we have to monitor it very closely. We do link in with our district and borough planning departments and monitor their applications and their completions and occupations as regularly as we possibly can, so we can try and keep as live a picture as possible on the situation.
Yeah, all I'm saying is this is a more unstable situation for quite a few years past, I guess.
Thank you.
This is a bit of a four-dimensional chess game, isn't it, I think? Any more? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item eight then, which is academies update, and that's Neil.
Thank you, Phil. So these reports come to Schools Forum after the points of when schools convert to academies. And this is the first report for nearly a year and a half, because the last school to convert was back in September 2019. So however, this time round is we've had four schools that have converted to academy, and they're listed in 2.2. Table and then table 2.1 gives you the total number of maintained schools, academy schools by phase. So you can see we're nearing the 50% mark whereby we would perhaps have the tipping point where there'd be more academies in Warwickshire than maintained schools. This is for information, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Fay, Patrick, Neil, please.
Hi, I did email Neil about this, that the report isn't actually fully accurate because there are schools that I know and are trusted in my area that are not included, that they were previously part of another trust or standalone academy. So I'm sure the absolutes are fine, but in terms of where they actually belong in those tables, it's not quite accurate.
Yeah, I think Fay's absolutely right, I mean, the total number of schools that have converted to academy is correct, but some schools have changed who their multi-agency trust is, academy trust. That has not been reflected in the appendix or in the summary table. I'd be quite honest, it is actually quite difficult to keep track of where the academies are at any given point in time. But I will be all in depth to make sure that the tables in the appendix are accurate for future reports.
Yeah. Okay, because, yeah, the information's on getting information about schools, so there's clearly some central repository with the correct data. So, yeah, ensuring that we reflect that, thank you.
Thank you, Fay.
Thanks, Fay. Rose, go on, please.
It's just a curious question more than anything, do we know how that compares with other local authorities, the percentage of academies compared to maintained?
We haven't done a comparison of other authorities, but I'm aware that, for example, Oxfordshire have a vast amount of academies, schools that have gone over to academy, but then Oxfordshire were very proactive in encouraging in schools to convert. Warwickshire, we've taken a bit more tepid approach to it, so we're not minded to encourage schools to convert or indeed try and stop them if they do want to convert. But, yeah, so it's very much different from different authorities.
Yeah, because on the opposite front, Coventry took a stance years ago not to encourage it. So I just wondered where, it just, it just was a curious question, it just posed that curiosity in me, thank you.
Would you be able to simplify it, Neil, to say that the Shire counties are probably at one end of the spectrum and the metropolitan areas are probably Ian's going to tell me.
No, no, there are different political positions that have been taken over the years in different authorities. There's no absolute pattern between counties and metropolitan authority areas. Warwickshire says that all of the schools in Warwickshire are part of the family of schools. So there's a particular flavour to the neutrality on academyisation. And it's one that stood us in good stead throughout the Covid period, that we do have participation every Tuesday lunchtime from leaders, over 200 leaders from all types of academies and schools. We have the same in terms of participation in our webinars and strategic programmes. So there's a real engaged version of academy neutral.
Thank you very much, Ian. Sybil Hampson, please, welcome, Sybil.
Hello, just to ask you a slight update on the Coventry scene. Yes, that was a political stance some years ago, but that has changed. There isn't a single secondary school that isn't an academy now, and it's roughly 50/50 on the primary scene.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much for that update, Sybil. Larry, please, Larry Greenelli.
Yeah, thank you. Just, I'm hearing mixed messages about an expectation from the DFE about another drive to get schools to move to academies. Have you got any further information on that? We had the, we had the drive a couple of years ago that everybody had to change by certain dates. I'm hearing that we're likely to see one for 2024.
Yeah, you're definitely hearing other things than us. We meet with the DFE every week in the national materials and in the discussions. We're not expecting a push effectively. You can see out there, there are ministerial statements where they, instead of making a compulsion or a statutory push, they say the case should be made on its merits. There is a different type of push though, and that's around the, there is an ongoing piece of work around encouraging single academy, standalone academy trusts towards more collaborative models. For all the reasons you would have expected through the Covid response and recovery period, that there is more resilience in groups of schools working together than there sometimes is if they're on their own.
Okay, thank you for that. Any more questions, comments on that report, please? Okay, thank you, we'll move on to item nine then, which is the Send and Inclusion Change Programme, and that's Dwayne, I believe.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody, I'm just going to provide you with an update today, no decision-making, but just an update around the Send and Inclusion Change Programme. So just a bit of background, as you know, it's been a year, year this month that I actually joined Warwickshire County Council, and it's been a really busy year. In terms of joining, as you know, we had a 1% overspend, in excess of 1% overspend on the high needs block. We pulled together the DSG recovery, a sustainability, the strategy and empower to one programme, which consists of 31 projects. So there's lots of projects covering what we see as our statutory obligations, good practice, as well as those that are narrowing the gap in achievement and attainment for our children with special education needs, and obviously delivering the strategy. So out of the 31 projects, there's some positive news in terms of how many projects are actually being implemented. So we've seen three projects implemented, that's not on the school role project. And if I give you some data around not on the school role, when I joined in February 2020, there were 1,100, in excess of 1,100 children that were not on a school role across priority groups. And by September last year, we brought that down to 900. And I can report today, just off the press, that we have 253 children now that are not on the school role. So we've been really actively getting our children into our schools. Again, in terms of the FSA, and I know we're sort of going to Brian's report, yes, we've been cleaning out the data. We've worked really hard this year to make sure we know where our funding is, where we spend our funding. And we've put in processes that we can forecast better, and we've implemented that process this year. So we will see the benefits of that, no doubt, in the forthcoming years. And as I said, you know, we have been working really hard on the data and we've been working hard on a finance module to make sure that our synergy systems are as best and as robust as they can be. So there are three projects, there are three projects I'm saying that are live, and we've implemented them. We've got 11 projects that we are developing into full business cases, and we have another further tour which we are developing into what we call our PPDs, and that's project proposal documents. We've deferred three projects from phase one, and that was because of Covid and the engagement that was required from our school leaders. In saying that, what we have done is brought up other projects so that we don't waste that opportunity to drive through a change. Again, if you look at the papers that come in the school forum, the data and appendix one of the projects is attached. There is activity, and I am seeing positive impact, and as Ian says, we meet with the DFE every week and I meet every month with the DFE, in particular around Send and our vulnerable groups. What we know from last year in terms of impact, our ISP numbers are lower than What we know from last year in terms of impact, our ISP numbers are lower than forecasted. So we, in terms of independent sector, the numbers going in have been lower. We, the state funded specialist provision is greater than expected, so what we're doing is placing more locally. And that's a positive trend. That's exactly what we wanted, is for children to be able to attend their local schools. The growth in EHC plans in terms of Warwickshire was quite significant, if I give you the average. We are, national statistic are around 3.2%. We are currently at 3.4%. So you know, the argument that we're not giving out educational, we are above the data set. And so we have seen a sort of decrease in the number of plans going out. And what we have seen in terms of alternative provision, could be we're by far an outlier in our data. So whilst we had children not on school roads, we also had a massive amount of children in alternative provision. And we have seen a decrease in the use of alternative provision and actually an underspend now in that budget area. So it's really pleasing that, you know, over the past year, we are seeing some positive impact. And, you know, what the data suggests across the board is when children are in schools and in our local schools, the outcomes for our children are better. And in terms of, you know, positive, we are still working, we are putting together a business case now and driving some projects. We're working into phase two. It's been a busy year for all involved. If anybody on the schools forum, and I know some colleagues here, we've already set up the kickoff projects, but you know, happy for any school forum members to join any of the projects as we move through. So we're hoping as we go into the second phase and the second year, that we will actually see alignment or some alignment now with the finances as we make these changes. And one thing I'm keen to stress, we are not saving money. There isn't a part somewhere else where we're putting all this money in. We are spending well over our allocation at the moment. So what we are trying to do is narrow the gap between what is coming in and what we are actually spending. So that's a general update for me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Fay.
Fay Patfield, please.
It's always me, Dwayne. Hi. So just a quick question. You said some projects have been postponed. Are they the Empower ones? The Child Centre Inclusion Pathways, the Countrywide SEMH Campaign and the Changing the Conversation ones?
Yeah, they are the three in short, Fay, and the reason being that was, you know, with Covid and pandemic and sort of the engagement we required for school leaders. You know, we didn't feel that we would have had that right engagement. In saying that, what we have done was moved up the top of funding so that we are now, we've actually had the kickoff meeting with that. Also, what we have done is moved in other sort of projects up. And one is about, one we're looking at at the moment, just for school members to be aware of, is employability and the preparation for adult agenda and internships. And we're going to align that with, you know, Warwickshire with the output of Covid, yeah.
I suppose I'm just concerned without those projects, the there's only so far that you can go in terms of the money saving and data impact. Because I think a lot of the issues within the system are based on attitudes, are based on outdated understanding, not understanding children's SEMH needs fully and what actually needs to be done to support them. And I think there does need to be, you know, a paradigm shift, both in education and society to, to do that. And it's, yeah, for how long? It's really hard because you're trying to do, obviously, originally you planned to run those initially. Yeah, how do we get over that barrier?
So we are starting now that. We're putting together, so changing the conversation because it is about behaviour, as it is that cultural shift. And recognising that all our children first, they're children first. So we are preparing now, we put together the PPD for that, and we are preparing to start and launch that. So, you know, it is in the process. We just delayed it, but we never stopped, Fay. We brought other projects up so that.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's the concern that the real crux of the matter gets lost. That's, I think that's where we'll see the biggest changes. Because yes, you've got children back in schools and different schools, and there is the the concern that that's a novelty for those particular children. They'll do okay for a while, but then the same issues come back because the behaviours are not fully understood. It's not fully embedded, really. The cultural change is not embedded. So the issues that they faced in their previous school, which they then had to leave and seek alternative provision, and they're giving it another go. Yes, we're seeing those reduced numbers now, but without that changing conversation, are they going to jump back up again in a couple of years?
No, so I think in terms of the programme, I mean, you know, the programme is massive, Fay, and you can't do one without the other. I know that sounds a bit silly.
No, no, I do understand.
So I think when we talk changing the conversation, I think for me personally, that started within Warwickshire. An understanding from colleagues and expectations. I mean, you know, when we look at outcomes for children and young people with Send, you know, they're not positive. And so for me, it was meeting with my staff and the past year has been working with, you know, 300 staff within my service areas to actually get them thinking, how can we do things better? What can we do differently? Because obviously, their fears of schools being able to meet children's needs as well as being a barrier to children going and setting up the wrong expectations for our families. So we have worked there. We are working with school leaders, but what's important for me, Fay, and that's our next, this is running alongside, is what my services offer our school leaders to support. And, you know, I am having some challenging conversations, as you can imagine. But alongside that challenge comes the support. What I'm saying to leaders is, what can I do to support you? I've got 300 staff and I'm happy to support you to take this child. You know, but yeah, I mean, I am seeing a shift. And I said a while ago, it wouldn't be overnight. I mean, this is going to be.
That is a long term thing, and there is a lot of intrinsic change that needs to happen within the system altogether. I did have one other question, just on the project further below, and I wasn't sure on the wording really. It's the project seven, supported internships. And although that's not started yet, it was just the way that it was worded. Cost avoidance through young people with EHC plans, securing full-time employment rather than continuing education. It seemed at odds with ensuring that all children have the opportunity to fulfil their potential. And for some children, that might be continuing education.
Absolutely. But what you have to say, so we don't cease the plan, so colleagues know, we don't cease the plan when a young person goes into an internship. That plan is maintained. But what we do know in terms of the preparation for adult agenda, yeah, that is an outcome from our agenda into independent living, into work and employment. In terms of costing, in terms of balancing that cost, and it's been affected this year because obviously with the pandemic, we've not had employers take up the internships we would require. But if we can get a young person in the PFA agenda into employment, into, you know, into that arena, then the outcomes for that young person are better. And we have had success stories of that. And in terms of the high needs block, yeah, then what we do know financially, it has an impact. And it can be quite a significant impact on the high needs block.
Because it does say in the financial assumptions that there is an assumption that each successful supported internship will lead to a ceased EHC plan, which gives an average annual cost avoidance. So it, it reads to me that we'll get them into employment and then they're not our problem anymore. And obviously, the EHC plan is supposed to cover young people up to the age of 25. They might not be in learning, but they need other support. And I don't know whether that funding comes under.
So Fay, some of the young people that, you know, when we cease plans, I mean, there's three things with a plan, we cease, maintain, no amend. Some of the people I'm talking about are 25 years of age.
Okay.
We're not talking 16-year-olds going into internships. We're talking young adults. If they come with a social care package, add on social care, they would be supported by that route. But part of an education in the PFA agenda is to get into employment. Yeah.
I agree. It's just, it's not that clear in that. And can you understand how I'm reading you?
Absolutely. And I'll take that back, yeah.
No, thanks ever so much for the clarifications and, yeah, all of the answers. And the report is great to read. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Nikki, please.
Hi, yeah. So I volunteered as a school for a member to join the school top up funding project. So I just thought I'd share, we'd had our first meeting. It was a really good meeting and we looked at very tight deadlines for the next stages, which are really important. And I think one of the notes on this section is, you know, consider being a volunteer to come on. And I think we'd welcome all members to come on board because we talked about splitting into maybe early years group, primary, secondary at one stage. So I think the more of us that are on there will be really good for those meetings. And I think it was really good in that meeting that we're looking from the north to 25, which was just brilliant to have from that early intervention. And we look at a lot of the costings and where a lot of the finance has been spent. And if we get that early intervention right, and I know Dwayne's putting a lot of time into that, I think we could start saving. It's a long way, but I would highly recommend you volunteer to join the top up funding. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I very much support and back up what Nikki said. I was part of that working group too. And it's, we've had one meeting and it's been certainly very interesting so far. So we encourage all forum members, or if they know anyone else, any of the governors or head teachers that might want to take part.
How do we join?
Spread the word. Let Dwayne know.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Get in touch with Dwayne. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate people have got pressures on their time. But yeah, it is, it is very, very interesting and useful. Okay. Thank you very much. Any more comments or questions, please? Dwayne, thanks very much for your comprehensive report. Item 10, Assistant Directors' Update. Ian, please.
Hey, thank you, Chair. I'm not going to duplicate the ground that we covered on other reports this afternoon. And I wanted to start a little bit just by taking you through where exactly we are on Covid response and recovery. And it's been a really intense month around expectations being set for wider return to school. And across the system, all of those risk assessments, whether it's in support services or in schools, being refreshed, mitigation action plans being refreshed too. Lots and lots of messaging from education settings and from the local authority around what to expect with wider opening. Lots of practical preparations having to be put in place, whether that's in terms of the transport network or around expectations at each age range and for the workforce too on regular lateral flow testing. Long shot of all of that intense work is that the wider return to school and education settings has been really welcome. You'll know it as governors, where you're governors, you'll know it as leaders in education settings, that education is really being appreciated by so many children, young people and their parents and carers. And of course, actually, all our education settings and communities are really welcoming that participation back. Really heartening, the reaction to on the wider opening from our trade union colleagues, amongst many others, who've been really appreciative of the efforts taken to prepare and the execution of the return. Hard data on it. Well, Monday, we were at 91.5% attendance. So as you can see there, just slightly below what we would normally be expecting. Within that, take up attendance in special schools was 85%. Secondary schools, 88.5%, primary schools, phenomenally, I have to say, at 95%. But we also still need to be vigilant. And it won't surprise you that last week and this week, there is some casework. We've been fortunate that the lateral flow testing is making a difference. So we've been able to identify some outbreaks really, really quickly, more quickly than we would have been able to do without asymptomatic testing. But the other key message is, and we need to find other ways, all of us, to keep getting the messages across, is the importance of vigilance, hands, face, space. You know, when we track the transmission in an outbreak situation, there is always a point where it has started within a work setting, an education setting. And for example, and it's a classic, and it does link back to when we had outbreaks in other times prior to lockdown. A classic, a staff meeting in a closed room, somebody coughing, thinking it was a cough rather than Covid. And low and behold, that's the source of an outbreak in a particular setting. Vigilance is so, so important to minimise the risk to disruption in learning and an outbreak in a particular setting. All of our wellbeing offer continues to be out there. We had massive turnout from education setting leaders for our conference shortly before wider opening. And it's so diverse, our offer, everything from art workshops to listening ears and coaching approaches, a range of different coaching approaches available for education setting leaders. Wellbeing will continue to be a major theme to get our education leaders and our education colleagues through the marathon of a response and recovery. We've done a lot of work as well on promoting our supportive and wellbeing offer for children and young people. There's a range of additional capacity being put in place across mental health and wellbeing, but also in terms of early help and safeguarding. Because we fully expect over these weeks, there'll be a number of situations in families and in children, young people individually, where there is a need for a link across for a health intervention or a social care intervention. So a lot of our Tuesday lunchtime calls have got, week after week, one of the support services for health and wellbeing for children and young people and families. So there's a familiar face, but there's also the signpost documentation on how schools can get a referral across when they're faced with a particular need for support beyond their own knowledge and capacity. Over the summer, we are going to be further refreshing our Covid recovery plan. A number of components are already in place for the first phase, including the availability of capacity and support for mental health and wellbeing and safeguarding interventions where that's needed. But alongside the national work on what the recovery plan should look like for the next five to 10 years, everything in there from what should be tested, examined, what curriculum expectation should be, how the national tutoring programme should be rolled out and targeted, to some of the nuts and bolts stuff, you know, we are already deploying 1.6 million for the holiday activities and food programme alongside our vouchers programme for families. And our focus at Easter and in the summer is to recover some of those lost social experiences and social development opportunities for children and young people. That's so important for so many reasons. It fits in with what families need and want in those periods. But also allows that chance for the education workforce to take stock and rest and recover too for the next long phase in what is going to be a marathon of recovery for learners and learning. We've been clear all the way through, and you'll have seen it in some of the papers earlier this afternoon as well. Much as there's been so much for all of us to work through in adaptations on Covid response and recovery, we've also needed to get on with the business as usual. And recognising there were some areas where there are demographic changes and challenges, some areas where there are practice shortcomings. and challenges, some areas where there are practice shortcomings, we couldn't leave the challenges that we saw and the needs that we saw on the Send Change Programme to one side. Now, we've been able to adjust some of the programme, as Dwayne was saying, things that we've been able to bring forward, as well as those things that we thought appropriately we should put onto a different timetable because of the pressures on education setting leaders. But it is heartening that we've been able to mobilise so much of the much-needed change programme and the capacity, by that else, I mean, the skills as well as the physical capacity across the system to be able to meet our expectations of what a good service should look like on SEND. It's a journey that started, it's got a way to go before we reach where we think we should be as an education community and as an authority. But there are many other aspects of business as usual too, whether it's in terms of those support services, that for a time have largely gone over to providing technical advice and services electronically, using the Teams technology. Gradually, where appropriate now, they are going back to onsite provision with appropriate risk assessments. And that includes actually gradually making the transition now on things like adult and community learning, family learning, to direct provision rather than just using electronic approaches. Massively developing programme on capital as well. Burn covered some of the work that's been done on sufficiency, clear in there that we need to continue to make further progress in developing new provision. And whether it's the Works for Academy that's scheduled to open this September, which links to the Send Change Programme, or the recent announcements on three rebuilds, importance of suitability in education settings, the Way 14 Free School, High End Lane North, which is interesting development in its own right, and move from a single academy trust model, first step towards a multi-academy trust model. There are a lot of additional capital announcements that we are helping facilitate and make the most of in terms of community facilities alongside our big Section 106 developer funding-driven model to expand capacity to meet sufficiency needs principally along the M6 corridor. Well, yeah, we're very busy. There's a lot still to do. And I am so, so grateful for the sense of there being that family of schools out there. Mentioned that meeting every Tuesday lunchtime where numbers continue to build. It really does feel like a community to make the way through the challenges that we are facing. Grateful for those colleagues as well across the council, whichever team they're a part of, working collectively and collaboratively to make the most of the opportunities that we have ahead. And open to any questions.
Thank you, Ian. Faye Packfield, please.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Ian.
Hi, Ian.
Just looking for some clarification. So in rugby at the moment, one of our huge secondary schools seems to have closed almost every single one of its year groups, Bubbles and so on. And I've just had a message from the school my son goes to and a message from the school my daughter goes to. It's clarity really around the testing process because the letter that I've received from yourself that was sent via schools, their letter to parents on what should happen, that schools and then messages that I'm seeing in the community. I also run a community group as well as being a governor. So it's obviously of concern to the wider community. But that Bubbles are being sent home on the basis of a positive LFT test for 10 days.
Right in law and practice.
It was a PCR test. That's what it says in the letter. This is where I'm trying to get the clarification.
Yeah.
So.
There are a range of different tests out there, LFT tests, LFD tests, PCR tests. But no, in law, if somebody has a positive LFT test, they should self-isolate. But it's not necessarily, bubbles are advisory. Where there is an outbreak in a school, there'll be an incident management team involving public health, and they'll be advising on exactly who should self-isolate and comply with the law.
The letter that came out to parents from yourself says that if you have a positive LFT test, then you legally have to get the PCR test. And then if it's negative, you can go back to school.
Yeah, that would be different. But when you've got the LFT test and it's showing a positive outcome, you've got to self-isolate. You can't.
No, I'm not saying that. They have to do that and self-isolate. But then that person has to self-isolate. Why is the whole bubble having to self-isolate when it's the LFT? So once the LFT is confirmed or denied.
Because we want to prevent transmission. We need to look after our neighbours. It's quite simple that.
So if they've done the LFT, it's positive, and they do a PCR, which is then negative, can they bring the children back? Why are they telling? Yeah, it's really disruptive. That's the reason I'm raising here.
We're just getting a bit dig down specifically. Do you want to take this offline and discuss it one to one?
Yeah, can do.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just, it's the impact on the education, you know, with schools, children have been back for five days, now they're off for another 10 days. It's the impact on the community and the education. That's why I've brought it up.
And we do know that in previous times, there were some schools that were cyclically significantly affected because they weren't able to get to the bottom of the transmission routes.
Yeah.
So every time they opened, they kept bringing it back into the school environment. There is a risk of that occurring again. It would be disruptive. The countermeasures are effectively that we have got some tools that we didn't have in earlier months, the asymptomatic testing being one of them. That means that we can identify people quickly to prevent that pattern of transmission. But rugby free school is amongst the secondary schools that are really closely being advised by public health at the moment. Ashlong's another.
Yeah, Ashlong's the one I'm talking about. And I've just been, yeah, notified of another one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jane, for us, please.
Is my microphone working?
Yes.
Oh, God.
Yes, we can hear.
I plugged it back in. There you go.
He there, Jane. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to make an observation around the self-test at home. And again, it's quite a lot of detail, but I think it's worth sharing at Schools Forum. The distribution of the self-test to a large school student population and staff population is a significant administrative burden for schools. That has now been exacerbated because we've just been advised yesterday that we have to record against each student, the lot number and the expiry date of each test that we're actually distributing. So I just wanted to flag it. I've raised it with Askel to say, that's ridiculous and it's just creating a huge administrative burden. But it would be useful if we could work with the local authority to try and reduce that burden. Because we're supportive of the self-test, absolutely, because we want the kids in school. But we need to make it practical and we need to make it reasonable. And that's not reasonable.
Yeah, sure. Actually, there's some additional work to be done on landing testing as well, including community collect, the expectation, again, on asymptomatic testing, that kids are available to the rest of the family, not just the kids or the staff in schools. The admin burden is significant. Jane, you're absolutely right on that one. It's not the only admin burden at the moment, because we're getting a number of concerns coming in that the national data recording expected by DFE has got a load of extra questions than it did several months ago, which is reducing the number of schools that are completing it each day. So it's less useful as an information source.
Yeah, because the other burden is us having to record the results, not just the positive results, but all the results of our student and staff population, even though the NHS has also recorded the results. So it's really becoming a logistical nightmare.
And on that one very specifically, we raised it again, this lunchtime was a DFE. At the moment, what we suggested is that what we should find a way of having is the system that is recorded under the health system. Because if people are recording all of these test results on that system and they're holding that data, we shouldn't be trying to duplicate that in a local collection.
I'd be very supportive of that. But yes, it's just obviously work in progress, but I just wanted to highlight that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Matthew Blatt, please.
Hi, it was just a quick one. Just very briefly, just pick up on Fay's point, just to let Fay know that as a head teacher for primary school, we're all following, all heads in Warwickshire certainly, we're all following the same rules. And as parents and people in the community, as much as it may well be a pain for yourselves, it's an absolute pain for us too. However, just rest assured that it's not a lottery what school you're going to. It's not a lottery if you're a primary or secondary academy. We are all following the same rules, but unfortunately, some schools are getting more cases than others at the minute. But if we were to get a case, we'd be doing exactly the same as Ashfield and other schools as well. All right.
I understand that. It's just, I don't understand if the student gets a negative. Yeah, yeah. I just don't understand the process. The documentation seems different.
No, the documentation is the same. As Ian said, the issue here that gets confusing, and believe me, as a head and Ian is someone who's having to deal with it more than I am, the guidance can be confusing. And now we've got a number of different tests, but ultimately, it doesn't matter what test you've got, it results in the same thing. So if there's a positive on any test, the bubble is shut down instantly. It can mean there's a negative and the bubble's back up. But the negative, sorry, the positive that comes out, whether it's staff or student, will result in a bubble of direct contacts getting shut, no matter how it happens, whether it's a home test, whether it's a school test, it's a positive result. And that's what we legally by law got to do.
Yeah, that's not what it says in this letter here that came with Warwickshire County Council. It says, once they've had a PCR test.
Picking up outside because we know what we're advising, public health and the county council.
Okay, that's fine. I'll send you an email. Okay?
All right.
Thanks very much. I think we should send our thoughts to all the heads who've got to deal with this.
Yeah, no, much sympathy. I understand. It's not an attack. It's a, it's a trying to understand.
No, no.
Yeah, I really do understand how horrendous it is for everybody having to deal with all of the difficulties around it. It's just when it's less than clear.
And, yeah.
Thank you.
Hopefully, as we get into the summer, numbers will go down and we can add. But yeah, I appreciate how difficult it is for us having to deal with this and for parents who are trying to, and they're off the, appreciate that. Any more questions for, comments for Ian, please? Thank you very much for your. Thanks, Ian. Did mention I've got an item which is business. You will note by email that came out, there are two consultations which the ESFA are conducting. Consultations come out at, which we have no control. We're forum members, put them on the agenda because they do come out randomly and we only have six weeks to respond when they come out. So we definitely can't put them on agendas. I would encourage all Schools Forum members to respond to the consultations, whichever ones come out when we get notified of them. I think, Neil, we're expecting in the near future, one on the National Funding Forum.
That's correct, Phil, yes. We've been promised it for a number of years. Back in the autumn, they promised it this spring. Spring's nearly finished, so we are expecting it at some stage.
Yeah, and I think we regard that as quite important for us to respond to. So when we do get wind of that, Nikki and I will certainly be having a chat about that and we'll maybe pull together an informal group of School Forum members at the time if they want to meet with us and formulate a response for that consultation when it comes out. But I do encourage all Schools Forum members to respond to consultations when they come along, because obviously we're involved in this and it's important that our voice is heard. Okay. All right then. If there are no further comments, I'll remind everybody that the next meeting will be in the afternoon of the 24th of June. Look forward to seeing you then. We'll still be on Teams then. Hopefully, we'll be able to get and see each other face-to-face later in the year. In the meantime, I'd like to thank everybody for attending today, for the officers who have attended and presented their reports. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.